All right, it is six o'clock. I will call the August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two meeting of the With County Board of Supervisors to order. This evening, we have pastors. Todd and Tammy Porter from Life Changers Christian Center provide the invocation. If you would, please rise and remain standing for the pledge. Pastor?
Well, I'll take a moment. I've always heard it's better to ask forgiveness than ask permission, so I'll ask for forgiveness. I just wanted to thank you guys for still opening up your sessions in prayer and allowing just for a moment to acknowledge our Creator. We appreciate it. Want you to know that we are behind you guys, we're for you, and not against you, and we appreciate all you guys and all you're doing. Would you pray with me? Heavenly Father, God, we just thank you today. Lord, we thank you for another day, God. We just thank you, Lord, for your faithfulness, God, and we boldly call businesses and tourists from the north, the south, the east, and the west to bless this great and prosper this great county. God, we just ask, Lord, that you have great success for this county businesses, Lord, these county churches, Lord, our schools, and heavenly Father, the students of this county. God, I just ask, Lord, that you bless this county in such a way that only you and only you can get the credit for it. Tonight, we pray, Lord, for wisdom, direction, and godly guidance, heavenly Father, for the Board of Supervisors that have been elected to govern on our behalf. And, Lord, we just pray, Lord, that you would bless this meeting, Lord, that you would bless this county, that you would bless this great United States of America, and may your name be glorified in all that's accomplished tonight. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Todd, if you would, come back up here just real quick. Just tell everybody about your display that y'all made out there. Tell them the address of your church, because if you've not been out there, it is absolutely beautiful, the display honoring our military and our.
Yes, it is.
So, if you don't mind sharing that with everybody that's not been out there.
I don't mind sharing it. We're at twenty-ten West Ridge Road. It's actually Never Forget Garden. There's twenty-eight of them in the world, and we were honored with a plaque to do a memorial garden. And when we introduced it to our guys, they drew up some plans, and it was a ninety-eight thousand dollar project. It is a hundred-year anniversary of the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier, and we have honored every branch of military out there, and it's just been a great... Honestly, people are coming from different states, and if we can figure out how to get it on a registrar, y'all may guide us in that. We'd love for more people to come up and check it out, but we've been blessed and honored to do so, and we honor our military as well.
Thank you. And like I said, I've seen it. I've actually, you know, sometimes when I'm out that way, I ride up there and look at it, and it's just, I mean, anybody gets a chance when you're out that way, riding around, you know, go check it out. So, thank you. All right, the first item on the agenda is Citizens Time. As always, I'll call you up. You have three minutes. The first person we have signed up is Mr. Sam Blevins.
How y'all doing today?
I talked to Brian, Gene, and Stacy earlier today on my complaint about the water increase that I received. And I've got print-offs here since I bought the property in sixteen till present. You know, I've been using two, three, up to five thousand gallons of water, and my bill went from like thirty, forty dollars a month to two hundred, and because of a two-inch line that was put in before I bought the property. But, so, I just wanted y'all to see if y'all could address that and look into it and see what we could do about to possibly fix it.
And Mr. Barrett, I know I've talked to you about it. I don't know if other folks have. And, and I'll... Was that all you wanted to say?
Yeah.
I didn't want to buy it.
I mean, y'all, I talked to y'all three, so.
Mr. Barrett, it's, which, like I said, I know I talked to you about it. This went back to the rate adjustment, whatever you want to call it, when we were talking about addressing the two-inch as far as commercial use. Is this something we need to refer back to the Water Committee or?
I would recommend so. Mr. Crisp has met, was saying today, they've talked about it. They've looked at it. There are several underlying issues of the meter and why the meter went in and what it was serving out there and what it's not serving. So, I think the best thing to do would be let Mr. Crisp work with him, and then a Water Committee can review it and look at it.
Sort of what I told him I thought we'd do. And then, just to clarify, I mean, I know this, and I guess y'all know this, the meter was in place when Mr. Blevins bought the property. But, you know, and I'll just tell you my viewpoint of it. When we introduced that increase, it was to kind of spread love amongst the industry and not have to put so much of the weight on Grandma and Grandpa that's working on a fixed income. Unfortunately, Mr. Blevins got caught in crossfire because he has a two-inch meter. And just speaking from this chair, that's not what I meant to do, right? So, but we'll look at it and see what we can do. But thank you for coming. All right, next person we have is Mr. Jerry Blevins. Mr. Blevins?
I would like to thank Liz Cheney for putting her moral values ahead of being politically correct. One does not want to lead a life where else he or she needs to call the Pope and ask for forgiveness before in this fat world. My stubborn neighbor has been up to his usual tactics. However, they have been more sporadic in the conscience, the most interesting of which was when the power went off in a storm a few days back, in which my backup generator kept shutting down even though it was being loaded to approximately a third of its normal capacity. Phone numbers were added to my phone call list and removed without any action on my part. It would appear that someone is trying to go to a lot of trouble to keep me have a lawyer's office. Gee, I wonder why. Thursday, August ninth was my last court date on my obstruction of justice charge without force. My lawyer wanted to meet on the day before, so he set up an appointment on the day prior at eight-thirty a.m. My attorney arrived at eight-fifty-five a.m. For the appointment, I told me he had another offer to give me, which I rejected as I had several times before. This made my attorney angry, and he said he was recommending that I take this order because I could be found guilty and go to jail and need to be bonded out all over again. I knew that was very unlikely since I was currently on a fifty-hundred-dollar bail unsecured, and there was almost no chance of that happening. So, attorney said, be at court fifteen minutes early and bring some cash with you in case you need to bail out. Next morning, I arrived at court at my quarter point in time, and when my attorney first showed up, he didn't even enlarge my presence. But approximately ten minutes later, he called me back to the conference room, whereupon he informed me the prosecutor was dropping his charge. My attorney then informed me how to go about getting my personal property back. Next day, I arrived at the With County Sheriff's Office to claim the property, whereupon I was told it was in property and it would take a couple of days to get it out. So, he set up a date, two days later, for me to pick it up. At the point of date and time, I arrived at the sheriff's office, and a man I had never seen before came to the door in a gray suit and tie and told me to go around to the magistrate's office where I could pick my belongings up, which I did. For the last two With County Board of Supervised meetings, you hear me talk about the secret service text message. I stated either the Secret Service should produce the texts or Congress should demand accountability. To my knowledge, neither has been done to date. This clearly shows in my opinion that the Secret Service is actually running our country, and if so, it certainly explains a lot. The free press would be controlled, and local police would be free to do to me just what they did to me. Our courts and justice system would also be controlled. Our democracy is but a distant memory. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Blevins. All right, that's all the people we have signed up for Citizens Time. So, I'll close Citizens Time. Our next item on our agenda is a public hearing in reference to Amendment Number Five, the Water Use and Management Ordinance. I'll read the notice of public hearing and compliance with the Code of Virginia and amendments there, too. The With County Board of Supervisors will conduct a public hearing at six p.m. on Tuesday, August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two to hear public comment on Amendment Number Five to the With County Water Use and Management Ordinance ninety-six point four. The hearing will be held in the boardroom in the County Administration Building, three forty South Sixth Street, Withfield, Virginia. A copy of the proposed amendment is on file in the County Administrator's Office located at three forty South Sixth Street, Withfield, Virginia. Our online at www.withco.org for public review. Mr. Barrett, we don't have anybody signed up for public comments, so I'll close that portion of it. Would you like to explain the ordinance?
Uh, yes.
Amendment, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This is Amendment Number Five. Basically, the only change is seven point four says when a water bill is connected for, or has been payment habitable, when a water will be disconnected for non-payment when a customer has a bill ten days past due. Prior to a non-paid disconnect, the customer will be mailed a notice, giving him a ten-day period to pay the bill in full. After the late notice are mailed, the customer must pay the bill in full, including penalty and interest, within ten days. The bill in full in the old system included the current bill. The amendment that arises seven point four indicates that the customer only has to pay the outstanding or late amount, not the current amount, and we think that is better for the customers and it works better with our system. So, when they receive this late notice, they only have to pay the delinquent portion, not the full bill, including the current bill. They still have until the fifteenth of the following month to pay the current bill. Staff recommends adoption of this amendment. Mr. Chairman?
And just to clarify, if somebody falls on hard times and they get their water cut off, this would be easier for them to get their water cut back on?
It would be easier for them to keep them from getting cut off. They could pay only the late portion of the bill, not both bills in the process. So, yes, it is a benefit to them.
All right. Does anybody else have any questions on the amendment as presented? Not all. Open the floor for any motion to approve.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Hornet to approve Amendment Number Five to Ordinance ninety-six dash five. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Burnett.
Aye.
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 So approved. And I didn't cover this earlier, but Mr. Cook is absent this evening. He's out of town. All right, we'll move on the agenda to the payment of invoices. Each board member has received a copy of the invoices in their board package. With that being said, I'll entertain a motion to approve the invoices.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry to have a second.
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Burnett. Is there any invoice any board member wants to pull out and/or discuss? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 So approved. Next is our minutes from our previous meeting from August night, twenty-twenty-two. Each board member has received these minutes, and I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Hornet, a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any comments or discussion? I will say, or, and this is bad because my mind is locked up.
Colleen?
Colleen, thank you.
I think that's where you're going.
Miss Cummins, you know, a couple of times a year, I try to give her a shout out. Normally, I remember her name. She does a great job with our minutes, makes them really clear. As you've seen tonight, sometimes you can hear people, sometimes you can't. Sometimes, you know, we get too far away from the microphone. Sometimes Stacy mumbles. I will call him out. But, you know, thank you, Colleen, for the time and the effort that you do to, for the clarity that we put out there for the general public. And I will shut up. I have a motion to approve or if I recovered that.
You already have.
I recovered that. All right, any more questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those who favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so approved. And we will move on to old business. The first item we have is Point Broadband. I believe we, Mr. Hankins, I believe we have some representatives from that company.
How y'all doing?
Hey, how are you?
Can you hear me? So.
Not importantly.
I don't know who I should say.
It's all about, well, you know, that, yeah, I mean, really, you might want to turn around and face the camera because the public is, as much as we're interested.
That's right.
The public's really interested. I'm just kidding. We got a camera facing us.
You want to face you?
I'll do about a foot times. So, so we obviously sent you a map. Before we get started, we'll go through that. I'll introduce myself and.
Let me interrupt you one second. I will ask if you try to stay at the podium because we do post this on YouTube, and it'll pick you up much better on that microphone.
Got it.
In the process.
Got it.
For the people that in the county that have internet that can ask.
Yeah.
That's what I want to hear. Yes, sir. Thank you.
So, a little bit about us. My name's Noah Maiden. I'm the general manager for Point Broadband for our Virginia and Tennessee properties. This is my sidekick here, Randy. He's got the construction. He's our construction manager. He's done it for, what, forty years about? So, very.
Long time.
Yeah, long time.
Thirty-three. You're overstating my age.
But, so what we've got, so looking at the TV and then the PowerPoint that you all have, so you'll obviously see this is With County. We've got it broke up in polygons. These are kind of how we're defining smaller projects within the bigger project. So, eleven and twelve, if you look at those big white spots, those are actually the VOTI-two areas, right? So, those, we still, we'll talk about each one of them, but I just wanted to let you know what that is. All of the other colored areas, except for ten, Withville, Withville's not included, the city of, but all the other one through nine, those are VOTI-one. So, going directly, just going straight into it, VOTI-one is going to be a total, it's two thousand one hundred and twenty-five With County passings. Now, in that that we're building, that's obviously that number fourteen hundred and twenty-five are actually in the VOTI-one application. So, we're building, what, six, seven hundred more passings in With County than the VOTI-one covered. So, where we're at with VOTI-one, so we have already constructed two hundred and forty-six passings, and that will be number three. If you look on that map, number three is done. That gives us two hundred and forty-six total passings, a hundred and ten of those are VOTI of the fourteen twenty-five that I said earlier. So, we've got a hundred and ten of them done. Now, looking at the rest of it, two through nine excluding three, we are, is one up there? No, I'm sorry. One through nine excluding three. We're going, we plan to have those done by the end of the year. So, we plan to be done with VOTI-one by the end of the year. The deadline is June, I think, so.
Next year.
So, we're going to get done. Our plan is to be done about six months early. And what that's basically going to give us is what one through nine excluding number three is, is that's going to be eighteen hundred and seventy-nine total With County passings. Of those eight, eighteen hundred and seventy-nine, one thousand three hundred and fifteen are the actual VOTI-one grant passing. So, that's where we are currently, and that's where we plan to be by the end of the year. So, now also looking at the map, eleven and twelve, that's VOTI-two. We obviously, what, two weeks ago, just signed this. So, where we're at with that, we're still in the walkout and survey phase, and that obviously, you can look at the map, it's a big area. It's going to take us through the end of the year to get all the walkout and engineering and design done, and then we'll begin construction on VOTI-two sometime in Q-two. I'm hoping the beginning part, but, you know, it's a moving target.
So, may I interject? So, in anticipation of, you know, VOTI-two and everything we heard back from, you know, various boards, we went ahead and rolled out some design folks out into the field. So, both of those sections, even though we only, you know, received the VOTI award a short time back, we're already ninety percent covered as far as the walkout is concerned. Design is a little bit more tedious, a little bit more time, but the walkout field collection of that data has already, you know, gotten to the ninety percent mark. So, we're actually ahead of curve in respect to VOTI-two.
And going back to it, so VOTI-two, some numbers with it. So, it's going to be eight thousand eight hundred and sixty-six total in its estimated passings at this point because we haven't completed the walkout and the engineering. Once we get that done, we'll have the exact amount. Currently, that's what we're estimating it at. Like I said, construction's going to begin in Q-two, and then we'll obviously complete it in twenty-twenty-four, in July of twenty-twenty-four. Hopefully, we'll be done a little sooner. Some things we do have coming, by September the second, we're going to have our online map for the public to use so they can click on the map. It'll be something similar to this. It'll probably look a little prettier, but it's going to be similar to this, and it'll have timelines on there. It's something that's important, very important for us because we're a business and we got to sell it. So, this lets them know when we're coming. It's a very good tool for us and them as well. But that should be done here in a couple of weeks. Other than that, over, you know, generally speaking, we're, I'm actually really, really proud of Randy and his team. They've done a good job. There's a lot of things right now just from supply chain issues mainly and the demand, you know. The federal government's pumped a ton of money into this industry, and it put a strain on resources. There's only so many contractors, and now you've got all this money. So, it's been tough. They've done a fantastic job keeping up with it and keeping us ahead of schedule. So, right now, everything looks really, really good. Like I said, we're going to be, you know, the plan is to be done with VOTI-one by the end of this year, which is going to give you fourteen hundred and twenty-five VOTI-passings, but a total of two thousand one hundred and twenty-five new passings. So, and that'll be all that colored area there, except for the city of.
Yep.
So, questions do you all have?
What do you mean by passes?
It's a home.
A home?
Yeah.
Passing by.
Home, home business.
You got it.
Yeah, we're not, we're not, even though we pass a lot of abandoned homes, maybe fire has taken a home, we don't really classify that as a home's pass because today it physically doesn't exist or it's not occupied. So, we really, really struggle, not struggle, we try our best to look at each home that's in countless, that's occupied and looks like it's going to be occupied. Obviously, we put additional dark fiber out there, too, to serve anybody that, you know, comes in, establishes a homestead, you know, home place and builds a house, moves in a mobile home, whatever, you know, camper, who knows? I mean, the world, you know, is what it is today. But we do build some of that into our plant so that we can allow for the expansion very easily. One other thing that I do, that I do, we didn't have it on our notes, but it just popped into my head. I think you'll find it valuable when you talk to your citizens and, you know, constituents, is that we are building a redundant ring throughout the entire county, and not only just one, but a ring within a ring, so to speak. So, in the event something happens on the southwest corner, maybe around Speedwell, where we're going to have some active electronics there, it will feed back around the other side of the ring. It's not in place today, but we're building it as we, you know, progress. All of our new designs are incorporated in this as well. We're not only doing it here, but we're doing it over the overall VOTI-one and VOTI-two footprint. So, there's some redundancy there. I know it's, in the recent past, you've had some flooding in the Cripple Creek area. We actually had some of that already built and had to go back, you know, taking those poles, if they'd have been taken out in a traditional non-rings standpoint, we would have an outage that would have lasted probably to the tune of a couple of weeks, just because of some of the AEP damage that happened out there. This is going to give us redundancy, kind of a backup, so to speak. So, I think you'll find that once the product is finished and everybody's on, the redundancy that you're going to gain out of it's going to be pretty valuable to the folks, especially in the further.
That's real, because we just had the floods that were, that just happened, what, a month ago. Like, we had a cabinet there. It's old. It's been constructed ten, fifteen years ago, whenever it was, but it doesn't have that ring, and it was, it's down like a week and a half. Couldn't do anything because AEP wasn't up there, wouldn't let us up there. So, anyway, what he's talking about is a huge value. It just keeps service on longer, right? You've got more uptime instead of a little bit of downtime. So, it's a good point.
Very good point.
And I heard this from a citizen who I assume talked to one of your people, one of your contractors, that you've run into problems with permits from VDOT.
It's been challenging. Not going to say it hasn't. However, however, if you look at the map, starting right about where the ten is, over there on Ny Road, the professional engineered VDOT permit for that section from there all the way down to Speedwell and a little bit into Crockett and a little bit, you know, over into towards Ivanhoe, that permit was sent to VDOT today. It was a ninety, how many pages did I tell you? Ninety-five?
Ninety-five.
Ninety-five page document, basically wherever we're within the VDOT right-of-way. As you know, you know, each parcel of property either has a VDOT right-of-way or it doesn't. So, all that has to be really detailed and defined, so to speak. VDOT's been a wonderful work with. We don't want to take away. We've got some good partners there. It was just a little bit more challenging in this district than it has been in some of the others. But having said that, we.
We also hired, yeah.
Yeah, we hired Harder Management Group, which has been very professional, very forthcoming to head that up. And so far, what I'm seeing is very promising that we'll be able to get through that process. We're going to submit each cabinet separate. The backbone went in today. We expect you of VDOT to turn that around to us in thirty days or less. So, cross your fingers. If all goes well, you know, October, we're going to be heading south on twenty-one and starting to build that stuff out.
And going back to, going back to something you said earlier about, you know, the federal government has put all this money into broadband and also the state. If you run into problems with VDOT or getting permits, if you'll reach out to, and I assume Mr. Hankins is the contact for the project, but, you know, we have contacts in the state.
That's helpful. Good to know.
And, you know, and I'll let anybody else chime in, but this project needs to happen, and we don't need bureaucratic delays and red tape.
Tell you, we've got one USDA. If you can help us there. I don't know.
That's federal government. Reach only goes so far.
I think that's who's got, that is doing the forestry.
Yeah. That's, you know, speaking to that, we will encounter some of the USDA, you know, forestry, you know, stuff in With County. I mean, it's there. But, that being said.
I think we're getting ahead of it.
We know enough about it now. It's been kind of a learning curve, you know, for some of our folks. The process is in place. Harder Management Group is heading that up as well. And a little bit more time-consuming. So, having said that, I'm glad you brought it up, Noah, because some of these areas that do reside within the forestry, you know, land, you know, we might build to it while we're waiting on that permit to get through the forestry land. At the end of the day, we want to do it legal. We want to do it the right thing, you know, by the public and by, you know, the government that's funding. You know, we can't, don't go sidestep anything. We want to make sure that it's done right, proper, legal, you know, all the documentation's in place. You know, at the end of the day, whatever we put on, you know, the forestry, you know, land, we have to, you know, there's a maintenance fee that comes with that from here for the life of the fire, because we have to have access to that after the fact. Same thing with VDOT.
And we actually do have good contact with Congressman Griffin's office. So, I mean, if that's something we can help get on the USDA.
I think I was being a little facetious. I'm being serious, but I was being a little facetious. I think we've actually got it in a pretty good spot now.
Well, and I guess, you know, my point is, I don't want any unnecessary delays because, you know, we've got citizens that are excited about this. I will say that you talked about the map on your website, and I absolutely know that you guys are very busy, but, you know, you don't have the With County project on your website, and there's probably other projects that y'all haven't updated.
It's good.
And the reason I say that is, one of my fears is, it's really, it's not so much in my district, Mr. Smith and Mr. Burnett, is, you know, I hear people all the time asking, you know, who should I get internet with? And I don't want to get, I don't want them And I don't wanna get, I don't want them to get locked in, in a substandard contract and then when this thing is fully built down in.
You know, that's, it's happening too.
Yeah.
Our competitors know we're coming and that's, that's their.
Because, you know, luckily in my district, there's several people that y'all have already run five or two, they have signed on and they have nothing but good things to say.
Awesome, it's good to hear.
They love the price point, they love the speed, our county attorney is patiently waiting for anything that's not dial up at his house.
Understood, which cabinet do you live in?
He lives in my district. Does anybody else have any questions?
So just one question for me, all of the, all of the areas, it's colored, but I'm more focused in the, the whole county, but I'm really focusing in on number twelve. So every resident that lives in that shaded area will have access to the road.
I'm gonna, yes, now, that being said, there will be some folks that we can't make it to, you know, you had, just had one, it's been probably a month ago. The guy lived literally on top of the mountain, like two miles, had his own little road driveway thing, where he didn't build to him, that's two miles up the side of the mountain. But it's ninety, what, ninety percent, I think is what it is, it's ten percent is what, what the, I guess what we could, we're allowed to miss. That being said, my goal is exactly what you said, I wanna serve everybody. I mean, we're a business, it makes sense for us to, to do it, we're gonna do it. And it don't just have to be, I mean, we do them all the time, I just run, it was twenty-eight hundred foot drop for a customer this week that was outside of the build area, but, I mean, you're talking fifteen hundred feet, so. Yes, I don't want you to be concerned saying that we're not gonna get, we're gonna get every single person we can get, that's our goal, that's what we're for.
It's defined by, by, and I may or may not have seen it on the, the body, you know, twenty twenty-two, you know, poly, it's, um, it's basically a snapshot of Google Earth with a bunch of lines, yellow lines. Just because that defines the body area doesn't mean that, you know, we're not gonna pick up the house.
Right.
You know, two more houses down, just because it stops. We've advised our, our walkout team to, you know, make it make sense, you know, if, if the power line keeps going and you see houses, keep going. That's why some of the, some of the VODI one numbers, you know, twenty, twenty-one hundred and twenty-one, twenty-five total county passings. However, fourteen hundred and twenty-five are body related, the rest of them are, are part of the process. It's either you gotta, we, like the Withful stuff, we have to start in Withful to build south to be able to take that and branch out. I'd love to be able to, to go to nine and six and four and build, but it's just physically too far for the light that we generate from our, our pop here in Withful to, to just go. So we have to re-gen it down there so that we can take that and, and get that redundancy as well. So it, it's a process, it's a little clunky and painful at times, but, you know, by the time it's all said and done, it's, it's intact and redundant, so.
And I, and I don't know what, what everybody else has heard, but, you know, I, I'm still hearing from people that absolutely do not believe that they're gonna have broadband.
They are, they are.
And we put it out there and, you know, it's just, I, you know, I guess time will tell, but like.
It's really neat, this is a huge project, just this whole, the whole Mount Rogers itself, it's really neat, I've, we've done a lot and I've never been a part of something like this, it's pretty exciting, pretty neat to see, just because, exactly what you said, there's a lot of folks that, they almost don't believe you. You know, when we tell them, like, no, you're not, yeah, I really am.
And, and also, I mean, if, if you do have a particular address that, that, you know, maybe as a citizen is really concerned, throw it, you know, send it to us, send it to us. We'll, we'll compare it to, to the walkout data, compare it to the body, you know, polygons that we have and, and see. And, and at the end of the day, if for some reason, wild reason, it was missed and it's close enough, I mean, it's easy enough to put in. You know, now's the time, we really need to know about that, just so that we can make sure that the design is gonna accommodate that one or twenty or fifty, who knows? You know, homes that, that may or may not have, you know, gotten into that, so.
So my focus, my concern will be the Miller's Creek area, the Gunner Park area, just in, in my district alone. I know Jesse's probably got some and I know Jean does over in the Speedway area.
No, mine's colored.
Well, mine's colored too, but.
Yeah, but yours is all colored white.
Mine's all colored too, but the man said ten percent.
The good thing is, we're on the front end of this, we're not near the tail end.
That's right, yeah.
Now's the time to.
We got plenty of time.
Exactly what you want.
Only thing I've got bad to say about them is the guys that came and was stretching, well, they wasn't stretching the cable, they were stretching the cable to put the fiber on. They left a four-wheeler or a sick RTV or something at my house for a long time and I thought, yeah, they've gone, so I've inherited this, but then they came back and got this.
They shouldn't leave it there.
I know who they are, you can, you know, send your rent check, we'll get to them.
No, he wanted the vehicle.
I got you.
They were cool dudes.
So, yeah, and, and just a little clarification, the reason, the reason that happened is, is they did pull out pretty fast and for some reason or another, I still hadn't got to the bottom of that, they are no longer with the stuff, so. That being said, you know, here, earlier in the screen, and then I'll, I'll back down and let you guys get back to business, but we did, we did team up and, and, you know, form a partnership with Quanta Communications, they're a telecommunications, they're based out of Dallas, but they're a national company. They have an unlimited amount of resources, I say unlimited at a time like this, but, you know, what we've seen so far, limitations, if I say I need five more crews, they usually give me at least three, so that's on the, you know, upper side of that, so.
We do, we got one of the best contractors out, out there, we really do.
Consistently, over the past four to six weeks, we've been three hundred thousand linear feet a week, three fifty, three seventy-five. Just last week, we, we tanked in at, at four hundred and six thousand nine hundred feet a week. So they're putting this stuff up fast, thankfully, they're doing it safely. You know, at the end of the day, that, that's near and dear to my heart, let's get it done, but let's get it done where everybody's safe.
Does anybody else have any questions for the June?
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I might, one question that I get frequently is the cost to the customer to become a customer, what, what sort of upfront cost there they should be expecting?
So we have, it depends, we'll run specials, but it's usually a hundred bucks, a hundred dollar install fee. One of the, I, I will say, one of the, the great things about Point Broadband is our prices, our prices are really, we've got a gig, you can get a gig for sixty bucks. So there is an install fee to cover that initial wiring, because I guarantee you, they don't have fiber, but, but that's the end of the process after that. I mean, and that's, that's still pretty cheap compared to other people, or to other competitors, so, but that's what you're looking at, a hundred bucks.
But, and, and that's just, and I don't know if this is what you meant, Mr. Hankins, but that's just the, the hookup fee.
That's right, that's just the install fee, it's a one-time fee and then your, your service will depend upon what speed tier and what package you get and all that stuff.
And, and I don't wanna say anything but what you said, you're in charge of one gig, because I'm not, apparently I'm not eligible because I live in Tannehill tree yet. But I, I honestly, I never thought that people that live out in the county would be getting higher speed internet or less.
Our new technology that's getting rolled out in a month, well, they can get ten gig if they want it, so.
Yep.
It's.
Yep.
Got good technology for sure.
Light that up at the end of the week and start full testing, field deployment next week.
I, I do need to get in touch with you all by phone, we're taking, we've had a request from an adjoining county due to some terrain, they need to come into With and come back around to get to another part of their county and they wanna discuss whether they dark fiber all the way through or they hit all these passings or whatever and I wanna coordinate that with you all in the process.
Got you.
And, and I'll just, you know, again, if there's anything we can do to help the process.
Absolutely, I appreciate that, that means a lot.
Or, you know, just reach out to Mr. Hankins or Mr. Baird and they'll get with us.
In that vein, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Puckett with Point Broadband has asked if you all will consider appearing at community events or at their community meetings where they're, they're informing customers about what their, their options are, just because it helps build that level of trust.
Does.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know that anybody sitting up here wouldn't, you know, like I said, we, we're still battling the, the people that don't think it's really gonna happen.
I understand, I understand.
We might not be able to get your road paved, but.
We got some internet, right?
You can stream movies, you know, in twenty twenty-two, I think that's a win.
Yeah.
So, but, yeah, absolutely, you know, if, if they.
That'll be, that'll be good.
Times and dates and.
Yeah, because what we'll do is we'll build one of these areas and then we'll have several little events, we'll do them at schools or, I mean, we do them anywhere, somebody will let us pretty much, but we don't do anything, we just pop up a, pop-up tent, we'll put it on Facebook and get people to come out.
Well, and, and I'll just tell you, you know, down in the retreat, the only reason I don't know is because y'all put a yard sign up on some farmland and I was like, what's that sign? And I was like, oh, broadband.
It worked.
Available here.
Yeah.
And I was looking, said it was so small, I wish you'd put like a full.
So we're gonna get, no, so that's one thing we're actually gonna do, I'm looking at, we're, we're trying to find the main, major intersections, I guess. It's hard because there's not a ton, but we're all, we're gonna try to put some, some bigger signs at those.
Well, in West County, all you need is two people, word of mouth will spread.
Right.
But may not be right, but it'll spread.
But again, if, if there's anything we can do, just let us know and thank you guys so much for coming. I, I know for me and several of them I've talked to, you know, we've had a bunch of questions and, you know, we, we know, I see you guys out in the community, I know y'all are doing, you know, working as hard as you can, but people are excited about it, so, and I'm sure y'all hear that.
Oh, yeah.
On a small project, so, but thank, thanks a lot.
Appreciate you all's time, thanks a lot.
Thank you guys.
Thank you all.
All right, we'll move on to agenda to appointments. Mr. Baird, do we have any change?
No updates on the others unless there is any recommendation on the Recreation Commission.
And we don't, does anybody have any recommendation on the Recreation Commission?
They have to be in my area, right, as of?
Typically, the, each district has appointed someone from out of their area, yes.
Yeah, well, I have someone that is about to move to my area, that is very interested in it, so if it's okay to put it off a couple more weeks.
And we've got a WCC appointment. Chief Deputy Klein?
Yeah, I'd be interested.
Did you say something?
Yeah, I'd be interested.
Are, are you being serious? I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I'll open the floor up for motion, I'm, I'm sorry.
I'll say that.
Excellent choice, I do wanna make certain, you're not teaching any classes or being anything up there, that's, that's one of their requirements, so that's what makes certain.
Yeah, I, I actually, I mentioned to them, because used to, and I can't remember who it was, they used to like to have somebody in law enforcement on the board and I can't, I don't remember if it was Ricky Arnold or who it was, but I, I was actually surprised because I thought he wasn't gonna say yes.
Well, he wouldn't make an eye contact.
Uh, well, at the door squeak, so, okay, I got a motion by Mr. Smith and I believe a second by Mr. Terry.
Yes, sir.
Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all of those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Congratulations and I dread going back to work tomorrow. Anything else under appointments?
Yeah, I, I need to meet with the electoral board and discuss that one, they, they've talked about having a liaison from the board, so I need to meet with them and let's discuss that one before we do an appointment, if you all don't mind.
And, and, I mean, if it's just a discussion they wanna have or some, I mean, and something that we can handle or a couple of issues they wanna discuss, just tell them to reach out, I mean, and, and I don't mean this ugly, but everybody sitting up here serves on multiple boards and, you know, we have a lot of meetings. Now, if it's something in general, they, you know, have a reason, that's fine too, I just, I, I don't know if there's that, you know, what, what the, I, the thought process is behind that, so. All right, is there anything under, anything else under old business, Mr. Baird?
I do not have anything else.
All right, we'll move on to reports, first one we have is a treasurer, Ms. Gwen.
Good evening. Y'all are lively. We're out already, right? Okay, I'll go over the financial report and then I'll cover a couple of other kind of minor things roundabout with you. As you had in your board packet, the consolidated account for the month of July contained a balance of eighty-five million eight hundred fifty-eight thousand two hundred and thirty-three dollars and within that amount, the balance of the general fund was forty million eight hundred sixty-six thousand six hundred and thirty-four dollars. So as you noticed in the, the finance director's report on, on the, actually the second page with the graph, we're on trend of where we've been, our, our revenues are higher than they've been, but as we get into May, June, July, we kinda start dropping down. August will pick up a tad bit and then the wonderful tax season hits and by September, we sort of start picking up and then October, November, December increases and going into the, the early part of the, the new calendar year, but we're, we're pretty well on track for where, where we've been running in past years, our revenues are higher, as I mentioned a moment ago, than what they've been over the past several years that you can see through that, that line graph there. Are there any questions about the financial report that I can answer or address for you at this point before I move on?
If, if I, I don't have a question, but while we are here, I will ask for you all to go to page two of her report, the statement of cash fund balances, page forty-six of your agenda. And you will see on the Board and Supervisor Reserve funds, funds, two lines from the bottom, American Rescue Plan Act Five Point Five Eight Eight Million setting there. That is the ARPA funds that have come in over the last two years and we've had them in a separate account. Later in my agenda, you will see a request to move what we have reported to ARPA, if you remember, it's under ten million, we can use it to offset government expenses. So I will be asking you, I don't remember the figure right now, I want to say it's about one point three million that we have reported, asking you to transfer one point three million of this amount into the general fund for what we reported, so I just wanted to point that out while we were here.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Gwen or can she?
You're killing me tonight.
Yeah, you're lucky tonight, that's what happens when you have two preachers.
I suppose. Well, sometimes it doesn't hurt us to have two there, Brian, so.
You won't get an argument from me.
Sometimes three can be even better. Okay, well, moving on with just some general information things, last meeting that I had attended at the end of July, I had mentioned our tax collections for personal property through the DMV stops and I had mentioned the number of stops and just flat out did not write down my number for the amount of tax that we'd collected and Mr. Baird had asked about that, so I did remember to look that up this time. So of the fourteen hundred and sixty stops that we had collected for, that's four hundred and sixty individuals, our tax collections for fiscal year twenty-two because of DMV stops was four hundred and seventeen thousand. So it is a, as I mentioned multiple times before, it is a huge collection tool for us. The Code of Virginia allows us to utilize that collection tool the same as they do, wage liens, bank liens, things like that, but the DMV stops seem to, seem to be our biggest thing at this point, that way we're not, you know, taking money out of people's bank accounts or out of their paycheck, that's gonna put them in a hindrance. We do try to work with folks if they have high balances and they're needing to get their tags, they don't want Mr. Klein or, or Mr. Wald or anyone stopping them and writing them a ticket. So we do try to work with people to give them the opportunity to get their tax bills paid if they do have a hold placed against them. But, you know, we, we look at the amount, the number of years owed, kind of things of that nature, but we also are still continuing to issue warrants in debt. We're sending out about thirty to forty a month and right now, we have court scheduled up through at least October. I may end up scheduling November and December dates as well, I'm not sure, but we, we look at our significant. But we, we look at our significantly high balances, um, our businesses that have business personal property that, um, especially if they have multiple years owed, um, is what we look at. If it's just one year, we don't really um, go after that, so to speak. Um, depending upon the amount, but if there's multiple years or a business um has closed or recently closed, we do try to go ahead and, and get a, a jump on those and, and get those pulled in and collected. Um, moving on, kinda talking about collections, um, Mr. Baird and I had discussed this and, and um through a little bit of uh miscommunication, we didn't quite get everything in, in your packet this time. Um, but normally around this time of year is uh when he, uh, when Mr. Baird contacts me and asks me for the delinquent list for real estate and personal property, if you're asked consideration to um be published in the Whiffle Enterprise and/or on the county website. So um, like I said, we had a little bit of miscommunication, so things didn't work out this time, but I will be um updating the list again and sending it to him for the next board meeting, so it'll be in your packet for consideration. Previously, um, what the board, um, those of you that have been here or even Mr. Burnett, you're, you're new to the process. But uh normally, the real estate list is published in the Whiffle Enterprise and then both lists for real estate and personal property is published on the county website. Um, normally, uh, we, uh, Ms. Collins will establish a date for publication with the enterprise personnel. And then um you all kinda decide about what a, a deadline, so to speak, will be, so that it gives me a couple of days to be able to pull the report. We have to consolidate names into uh one column for printing purposes for the paper and things like that. Uh, gives us the chance to get some um data consolidated in the, in the spreadsheet to um cut down on our cost of publishing. But um I'll be sending that uh to uh Mr. Baird and/or Ms. Collins for the next board meeting, if you're considering. So probably be looking at, um, I would say an early October publication date might be what you all would wanna do. Um, you can kinda um think on it at this point going forward to see how, how you wanna, want to handle that. Um, a lot of people call and threaten um legal action, you know, contacting Mr. Farthing or whomever, because um, you know, we, we're not authorized to do that, but the Code of Virginia does authorize the board to publish those lists. Um, through um fifty-eight-one, thirty-nine, twenty-four, the board does have the authority to publish those lists. And it does specify in a local newspaper and/or um on a website. So um, we're within our, our legalities of all of that. Um, it's not for public embarrassment. It's a collection tool, because if, if our money's not coming in, we can't support our schools, we can't support police, fire, rescue, every other department that we have, so. Um, so I wanted to touch on that a little bit, um.
Let me just interrupt you there.
Yes, sir.
My recommendation is, and, and, and miscommunication was not on her part, it was on me and my staff. We did not include that in your package and we should have. The um, I would recommend that we have her go ahead and run an updated report. We'll, we'll email you uh the, the list just to have it. But that we go ahead and run an updated report as of the, the first of September and put on your agenda. And then uh you all can vote on the thirteenth, whatever's uh not uh in, she can run an updated list like on, after the fifteenth. And I'd say go ahead and pu- you know, she can get it ready on the sixteenth and we could probably get it to the paper the um, by the, the twenty-fourth of September, be advertised in the paper, if we can get it formatted by that time. That will be acceptable to everyone.
Um, yeah, that would work, 'cause a board meeting on Tuesday, if the deadline is Thursday for a Saturday publication, we can definitely have it ready by end of day on Wednesday. Um, so, 'cause I can um, normally what I do, if I know I'm coming to the meeting, there's a possibility of it being approved, I'll go ahead and um pull it once we close at five, um prior to coming to the meeting or, or whichever, and um that way I have it and I can put one of my staff members on it the next morning. So uh, real estate's not as long as personal property, so it doesn't take as long to, to combine names. Um, 'cause if there's a co-owner, sometimes it's in a, a second column and we just need to combine that over into one. Personal property's cut and dry, 'cause uh with it being just an online publication, it's, it's not as um, we don't have to put as much into it as what we do for the real estate list. So your suggestion is uh run a report as of the end of August to be included in the nine thirteen packet? Or do you wanna list closer to your cutoff date for your nine thirteen packet?
If you wanna go all the way up there like September seventh, and then that away, we run the list and on the eighth, and we'll put it in the package on the ninth. And then they can vote to advertise that list on the thirteenth.
Okay, and the last thing that I have, um, I had mentioned before, but I guess kinda is a Mr. Farthing, Mr. Baird question. I was just curious on the status of um a potential ordinance change for the delinquent collections. So that this group can consider that draft ordinance in a public meeting and we can move on.
Yeah, that's on my list. We talked about that the other day, so I need to get a draft of the Stephen under the board.
All right, and what I'm referring to, I think I had mentioned before, um, I had asked Mr. Farthing, Mr. Baird to look at a revision to our delinquent collections ordinance. Currently, we can submit real estate taxes to the collection attorneys um to pursue those collections. And um any costs that are incurred can be passed on to the taxpayer um and then recouped by the county. If we turn over personal property right now, then we as the county have to pay all of those extra fees and costs. And I don't think the county should be um, um saddled with that burden of paying that. If we're, you know, we exhaust all of our options in the office and we can take warrants and get, you know, issue warrants, take judgments out all day long. Some people pay, some don't, but there's, um, we have a lot of judgments um hanging out there that, um, you know, every year we get them against the same people and, and they don't pay for various reasons. Um, you know, they're kinda circumventing the system in a roundabout way. Um, so what my goal is, is to um, have this ordinance updated so that it allows us to turn personal property over to collection attorneys as well. And then the twenty percent fee is incurred by the taxpayer and they have to pay that um in addition to their tax owed. So that kinda just broadens the current ordinance that we have. I think we talked about uh repealing the, the um, the current ordinance and then adopting an entire new one, so um, Mr. Farthing, Mr. Baird, work on that and hopefully you'll see that coming um across your computers soon. Mr. Baird forgot about me again, so.
Nope, we haven't forgotten about you on that one. That one, that one we are working on.
I kinda keep staying on you on that one, so. And I think that's all that I have for tonight. Um, I don't have anything else unless um you have questions or, or anything for me at this point.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Quinn?
I don't.
And we're working on taxes. Ms. Wald and I are working on taxes, so we're, we're slowly getting there, but we'll have more of an update on that later, so we'll,
October seventeenth.
You all before all the phone calls start.
October seventeenth, that's when I get to have my mailbox. All right, moving on, we have the commissioner, Ms. Wald. Do you have anything? I know you're gonna be short.
Yes. Hi, everybody. Um, I just want to give an update on the Board of Equalization. Um, the Board of Equalization is over. There were only forty-seven appeals. Um, out of those forty-seven, twenty-four of the assessments were reduced. One was increased because of a clerical error. A house was not assessed. They came in to get it lowered, but it ended up being made higher. Um, and twenty-two were unchanged. So uh that's, in the past, it's done. Um, we've got the values entered in the computer. So if we get the computer side going, we're ready to get some tickets for this fall. Does anybody have any questions about that? I was a little surprised that there were only forty-seven appeals.
Me too.
We're expecting a lot more, but. They just didn't come.
They just didn't do it.
Nope.
I'm surprised that one got increased. Sounds like my trip to that casino, bruh. I had good intentions, but it didn't work out that way.
Well, it wa- it was a pretty good-sized house, um, and um, you know, it just, it just had a zero value on it. So when they came to contest, it was an error that had to be corrected, and it was. So.
All right, does anybody have any questions for Ms. Wald? All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have a sheriff. Sheriff Foster's not here. We have Chief Deputy Klein. Do you have anything? All right, thank you, sir. All right, we'll move on to new business. Uh, we have the consent calendar.
Chief Deputy Klein, a question?
Oh, yeah. I've do- I threw him under the bus earlier, have at it.
Uh, so Chief Deputy Klein, where are we on the, I, I know the signs have been put up for the speed enforcement in the school zones. How long do we have to do that before we s- we'll see the cameras in those zones?
So the permanent cameras will be installed this winter sometime, but the handheld units are out right now. They're being used daily, so. Tickets are gonna be mailed soon.
Thanks, sir.
Yep.
All right, moving on to new business. First item we have on the agenda is our consent calendar. Each board member's received a copy of the consent calendar in their board package. And I will entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry to have a second.
A second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson. Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett? So approved. Next, we have a DCA, DCJS grant. Mr. Baird, is there?
Yeah, we have a DCJS grant for one thousand two hundred and forty dollars. Mr. Klein, I understand it was a, uh, Chief Deputy Klein with a question that came up to Martha the other day. Any reason why not to proceed with accepting this grant? Okay. Staff recommends uh proceeding with acceptance of this grant.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to accept the local law enforcement block grant.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Terry. Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Terry.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Obstain.
Obstain.
Aye.
So approved. Next, we have a DCJS victim witness, witness grant.
I'm surprised Deputy Street is not here to make certain you approve it, but I do recommend approval of this one, so uh.
All right, entertain a motion to approve the victim witness grant.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Horni, a second by Mr. Terry. Is there any questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
Obstain.
Obstain.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
So approved.
And I will comment on that grant and uh Chief Deputy Klein will probably agree. Mr. Street does a tremendous job of tracking all the expenses that grant and following that grant and doing every amendment he needs in the process. And I see Ms. Quinn shaking her head as well. She gets copied on all of them, but uh I appreciate his efforts and, and he continually makes certain that that grant is followed. I appreciate the work.
Do we have anything else under new business, Mr. Baird?
Just the staff reports, sir.
All right, we'll move, oh, I'm sorry. Had to flip it over. Moving on to staff reports, we have our Assistant County Administrator, Mr. Hankins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I do have uh some action items for your consideration. Uh, if you'll recall, back in the spring, we submitted a grant request to the Virginia Outdoors Foundation to be able to put in a couple of put-in and take-out points on Reed Creek, and I see Ms. Lawson smiling. Uh, we were awarded that grant in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we would ask that you authorize staff to enter into an agreement accepting that one hundred thousand dollar grant from the Virginia Outdoors Foundation.
Now, is that the one y'all wanted to refer back? All right, I have a motion by Ms. Lawson.
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any questions or discussion on that one? All right, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
So approved. I wouldn't bring much vote against that.
That is pretty exciting, though, to, you know, to provide our citizens a way to access Reed Creek if they don't, you know, right now. Unless you know someone that owns property or you can access it in town at the Trust Bridge. But unless you know somewhere, you know, to get out, but, so it's pretty cool.
Well, I think it's gonna be well.
It's pretty cool.
Well, and it, it will give people a safe spot to park to, to put in and take out too. And that, that's one of the hazards now, is people, you know, parking alongside the road. Uh, do you wanna recognize uh both Elizabeth Delp, our uh public information officer and grant writer, who's in the back of the room? Uh, she stepped down here from running the uh, the cameras to be able to answer any questions. But um, Kevin Williams also put in some work on, on this, so wanna recognize those, those two staff members for getting us where we can uh, can start to expand our outdoor recreation programs.
Absolutely. Thank you all for everything you did.
Related to those, uh, we have had conversations with two property owners uh about uh use of their, their property. Uh, we've received a preliminary um, uh lease agreement from Appalachian Power, which has the uh, the property on Miller's Creek, uh just off of Lampkin Road there in Max Meadows. Um, it's a zero-dollar lease. Uh, there are a few things that we'd like to ask for clarification on, so it's not included uh for your, your information. If, if you wanna see that, you're, you're welcome to, but we would ask that you authorize staff to enter into uh that zero-dollar lease with Appalachian Power uh once we've agreed to the language.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to authorize staff to enter into the zero-dollar lease agreement with Appalachian Power.
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion by Ms. Lawson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Terry. Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye. 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 Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
So approved.
And in the same vein, we'll need to enter into um contract language with Joint Public Service Authority for use of property adjoining the transfer station there on Kent's Lane. Just ask for authorization to proceed with uh requesting that from the, the JPSA.
All right, entertain a motion to authorize staff to negotiate that lease agreement.
So moved. Are y'all scared of me? I know it's my baby, but. I have this for five years, so you're probably.
That's kinda the feeling I'm getting over here, sir. All right, have a motion by Ms. Lawson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Smith. Any questions or discussion on that?
I have a question for the attorney. Since we're on the JPSA, can we vote on this?
Yeah, there's no money changing hands. Well, I don't think so. You don't anticipate a lease there, do you?
I don't think so.
Yeah.
I would hope not.
Yeah, they agreed till they wrote off.
I just wanted to make sure.
We agreed till.
We're having another discussion. All right, is there any more? Is there any more questions or discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye.
So approved.
And this one's not on your, your action items list that, that you have in front of you, but the Virginia Tourism Corporation, if you'll recall, received some money from the federal government uh to expand our tourism advertising and try to help with recovery uh for communities after the, the coronavirus. Uh, it's a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Uh, kinda Whiffle is front funding those expenses and we're reimbursing them out of the, the money that we've received from the state tourism corporation. It was too good to be true that there, there weren't going to be a lot of uh paperwork requirements for this, so um, there is a subrecipient agreement that we, we are supposed to sign uh for uh Virginia tourism uh with the subrecipient, the, the one that's spending the money on our behalf. Uh, so I would just ask that you authorize staff to enter into a uh subrecipient agreement with um the Whiffle Convention and Visitors Bureau for the expenditure of those funds.
All right, I'll entertain that motion.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Horni. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson. Is there any questions or discussion on that? All right, hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye. 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 Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
So approved.
Just a real quick speed of government story. Uh, sometimes uh waiting actually helps out with uh some of our projects. Uh, we initiated um action on those derelict trailers at uh the Full Gospel Mission Bible Church on uh Austinville Road. I was consulting with, with Scott over some, some questions I had about the, the heirs and their ability to, to transfer uh the property if the, the church were to pursue a se- a sales agreement. While I was consulting with Scott, the church went ahead and contacted both of the heirs and has worked out an agreement. And uh the heirs agreed to sell. Uh, that's gonna allow the church to purchase the property, demolish the trailers and clean up the lots. So uh without us being terribly involved, uh we, we see something positive happening there. So that, that's good news for uh that, that part of the community. Uh, we are meeting with um a, a potential new transportation district on Orion Drive. I've notified the uh, the two members of the board that uh are, are most closely interested in that. Uh, we're meeting with them on Monday. We do have two. Uh, we're meeting with them on Monday, we do have two others, uh, to, uh, uh, put in front of folks, but this one was probably the fastest and easiest to, uh, get everybody together and, and see whether or not it's going to happen. On our public safety radios, um, uh, put in, put this in for information, um, ProCom's having trouble with the Federal Communications Commission, they, they need to license frequencies in the spectrum that, that they need to make that, uh, countywide system, uh, work. Uh, they're having trouble getting all the frequencies that they need, so we're, we're having a meeting with the stakeholders in early September to try to see what our next steps are. Uh, and I've gone through all of the worst-case scenarios in my mind, and none of them are good, uh, but, uh, just wanted you to be aware, we're all trying to work through that, um, but we don't know what the resolution's going to be yet. Um, as far as our staffing goes, uh, we, we're, we're close to making an offer on a, a planner, we, we've, uh, had an offer accepted for dispatch director. And, uh, once I get paperwork, we, we do have another department head that has, uh, indicated they're, they're going to retire, but I don't have that paperwork yet, so I'm, I'm not going to tell you who it is. Cause I don't like to make it official until it's official. Also, in our Parks and Rec Department, we had a departure, you'll see it in your, your, or you saw it in your consent agenda, uh, Jacob Underwood left for a, a varsity coaching position, and Jacob's been an outstanding employee, he's done really well with, uh, the athletic programs. So, uh, we, we hated to see him leave, but we wish him well as he goes on to, to coach, uh, varsity, uh, ball. Carter Davis is his replacement, he's accepted employment with the county and, and has, uh, started, uh, working with us just in time for football season, so, uh, looking forward to seeing what he can do with our athletic programs. The Regional Improvement Commission meets on Thursday, uh, in Bristol, uh, so if you hear that I was at the casino, uh, I was. Uh, if you want me to place wagers on your behalf, I don't think I'm going to be able to do that on this trip, so.
Good luck.
That, that's, uh, the highlights of what I've got, I'll be glad to answer any questions about other things in my report or, uh, things that have been left off my report.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Hankins? All right, uh, and we're going to move on, and I'm going to pass the gap with Ms. Lawson because I, somebody's actually blowing my phone up.
Okay. Okay. We will move down to County Administrator, Mr. Berry?
Yes, thank you, the, uh, first item, uh, is the budget amendment request that I referenced earlier, this is the ARPA fund, you'll see a memo from, uh, Ms. Williams, you will notice she is not here tonight, which is unusual, she is on vacation, so we do allow staff to take vacations every once in a while, even, you know, you don't think we do, so, but, uh, once every five years, whether they need it or not. Uh, this has the actual number on it, it's requesting one million eight hundred seventy-seven thousand sixty-two dollars and five cents to be transferred from the ARPA fund to the general fund. Uh, this is for the expenses, uh, from July twenty-one to March two thousand twenty-two, filed on the annual report, and she has a copy of that information, uh, there with it as well. Staff would recommend that you all approve, uh, the, uh, transfer as requested.
Okay, I entertain a motion to approve the transfer as requested.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Terry, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, are there any dis, um, questions or discussion? If not, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Burnett?
Uh.
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 Okay, motion carries.
And the next is the, uh, Lots Gap Water Tank Materials bids, as, uh, you all know, it's a very competitive and environment out there with all the ARPA funds and everything else that is out there. Uh, similar to, uh, as what we did on the wastewater, uh, line going into Progress Park, we have bid out the materials separately. You will see, uh, engineer's recommendation to award, um, the, uh, materials bid to Sitco Water in the amount of one million fifty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty-three dollars. Staff would recommend you all approving the awarding of this, um, this project or this, uh, contract.
Okay, I will open the floor to entertain a motion to award this bid for this project.
Somebody please.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Horny, do I have a second?
I'm abstaining.
We have an abstention because it is running, this is run from Lots Gap Tank, uh, the new Lots Gap Tank to be constructed all the way down to, um, near Pres Jackson Road, and it does pass by, uh, one of our board members' properties, so.
I believe I cannot second.
Second.
Okay, thank you, I have a, a motion by Mr. Horny, a second by Mr. Burnett, any questions or discussion? If not, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry?
Uh.
Uh.
Abstain.
Uh.
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 Okay, motion carries.
Thank you, Wayne.
Who are we?
County Attorney.
We are the county attorney.
All right.
I never heard her say she won't turn it back to you.
I was ready to get this one done with.
All right, we're on the county attorney report, Mr. Farley.
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, thank you, uh, in your board package is a draft ordinance for the solar revenue share, which is set for a public hearing at our September meeting. That's just the draft ordinance for your review, uh, the one question that I'm, I think I've got an answer to, still trying to figure out, but, uh, there's a reference to a House bill that inserts a retroactive date. I'm having trouble finding the code section that that House bill became, um, I have a code section, it doesn't seem to have that retroactive date in it. Uh, the code section was not adopted until July of two thousand twenty, which is the retroactive date that we see in the other ordinances. And I think that is the date that we can't go prior to July first, two thousand twenty, um, I just need to confirm that to make sure we have that correct in the ordinance. But otherwise, the ordinance, in my opinion, is, what you see is what you will have for the public hearing and essentially what will be adopted if the board chooses to do so. Uh, but that's all I have to report at this time.
All right, does anybody have anything for the county attorney? Yeah, I was going to check on the progress on the elderly tax exemption, if that progressed nicely.
Yes, I do have, um, something on that from my associate attorney, um, yeah, I need to review that and get that Stephen, yeah, I've got something on that to pass to Stephen, thank you.
And we get it, we'll review it, uh, with, uh, commissioner of revenue and just make certain that we've got everything in line, and then it'll be on your all's agenda to review and discuss.
All right, does anybody else have anything for Mr. Farley? All right, we'll move on to board reports, we have the water committee report.
Uh, the water committee met on August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, and made a following recommendation. First, the committee referred Mr. Ricky Skeens' appeal to the full board for consideration.
All right, Mr. Berry, this is the first appeal I've dealt with, I'm not sure, um, what we need to do on this.
Well, I'll, I'll give you a, a timeline of the events and the information, uh, and then Mr. Skeens is here, we'll let him address the board, explain why he, uh, requests the appeal, if that had worked with everyone. So, um, on July twenty-sixth, a delinquent notice was mailed to Mr. Skeens, uh, indicating that he owed eight dollars and ninety cents. Uh, Mr. Skeens called the county office around August third to inquire about the delinquent notice, uh, and then he emailed me on the evening of August third and requested that, that, uh, fee be waived. Uh, on August fourth, I reviewed, uh, Mr. Skeens' request with staff, he had received a bill, uh, due July fifteenth, which was in the amount of eighty-nine oh one. Uh, payment was received on, uh, the eighteenth in a bank bill pay batch, and the date on the check was, uh, July eleventh. Uh, and that information, uh, is, is provided there. Late charges are, are posted the day after bills are due. Uh, in order for late charges not to be posted or to be removed from account, the following must happen. One, payment must be received prior to the fifteenth, and obviously there's a holiday and a weekend exception that comes into play there. Payment must be in the county administration drop box as of eight AM the day after the due date. Or the payment is received after the fifteenth with a postmark prior to the fifteenth on it. Or if payment is received via bank bill pay after the fifteenth, but the check is dated the tenth or prior. Uh, this portion of the policy was added in December two thousand twenty, uh, you all may remember voting on it. Uh, Mr. Skeen had previously, uh, addressed us concerning the issues with the bank bill pay, we were, we'd receive a batch of checks in from a bank, uh, from several banks in a bill pay batch that maybe dated the eighth, the tenth, the fifteenth, the sixteenth, and they would all come in after the fifteenth. Um, and there was no postmark on that envelope, so there was no way to, it did not meet the criteria to remove the late charges. So we implemented the policy that if a bank bill paycheck came in after the fifteenth, prior to the twenty-second, which allowed one week for those payments to come in, and the bank bill paycheck was dated the tenth of that month or prior, then despite not having a postmark, we would remove the late charges. Um, that way it showed that the individual had processed the payment, uh, by the tenth, allowed five days for the bank bill pay to get it here. The, um, I reviewed the request, it's Mr. Mr. Skeens' check was received via bill pay, was received after the fifteenth, uh, but was not dated prior to the tenth, the copy of the check shown is the eleventh. Uh, there was no justification to waive the late charge. I advised Mr. Skeens that I could not waive his late fee, um, and he requested appeal to the water committee, uh, which the water committee, due to, uh, potential conflicts, uh, from two of the three members, resulted in the appeal being brought to you tonight. Had his payment met any of the criteria, his late fees would have been removed.
All right, Mr. Skeens, you want to come up?
Members of the board, I appreciate the opportunity to come before you tonight, I hadn't originally planned to come speak because it was my understanding that the committee was going to bring that appeal before the board, but then I got an email from Mr. Horny saying just to come, just in case there are questions and what have you, so. I may not be as well-versed tonight as I would have been with the committee, um, but I will agree with what Mr. Berry says, the, uh, check was dated the eleventh. If you look in that packet, and I'm assuming they have all that packet that I presented, or you and I exchanged that night, or the day of the meeting.
Uh, I didn't get a package from you the day of the meeting, but they, they got a copy of the check and a copy of the, uh.
But the stuff that had been emailed, was that given to them?
Yes.
Okay, well, what was given to the committee, and, and obviously you folks may not have those in front of you, but I presented them, uh, on the sixteenth, a, a packet with ten pages that showed originally, um, when I had processed my online bills, and I usually do that around the twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh of each month, uh, I request the date for it to be in the water department's hand by the fourteenth or fifteenth. That was, uh, submitted on July the eighth, and I think if Mr. Smith and Mr. Horny could agree with that, um, I did provide documentation from the bank that showed that request was made on the eighth. Also, I gave them the last fourteen months of my bank account information that shows I was pretty consistent with the seventh, eighth, and ninth of the month of that being asked to be the date on the check, because I knew the policy from two years ago had to be the tenth or sooner, and had to be received, uh, by the twenty-second. Another point that I was trying to make with Mr. Berry, it, even though that Friday the eighth it was submitted, for some reason on the bank side, it didn't print till the eleventh, but it was in hand by the eighteenth, based on what's on the back of the check, and then funds were withdrawn from my account on the nineteenth, which again, if we could get to the black and white side of the policy, was before the twenty-second. So I didn't feel like I was delinquent for the eight dollars and ninety cents. I did, uh, request the appeal on the third of August, uh, got an email the morning around ten, twenty or so on the fifth, which is a Friday of August, and I'm glad I checked that later that evening, and I'm glad there was a county picnic because the water department was closed at noon that day. Of course, I was advised by the email that morning that I had till five, or I faced a disconnect. But however, due to the picnic, I could bring the funds by five on Monday the eighth of August, which I did and got a receipt. So that's where I'm at with the appeal of the eight dollars and ninety cents, it was paid, uh, I have appealed to my bank just in anticipation of possible you folks, uh, sounds like this might be a new process of denying the eight dollars and ninety cent refund back to me. But I did want to point out while I've got the floor, um, I received my water bill today from the water department in the mail, could have came yesterday, but I got it today. And if the committee members will oblige me that I met with on the sixteenth, Mr. Berry had presented the committee that day with a copy of my check for the August payment. And he clarified that day that it said August the ninth, which was before the tenth, and that there was initials on there that I would be charged the four dollars and forty-nine cent late fee. However, once my payment came before the twenty-second, which it did, he would have that removed. So it's dated August the ninth, I got my bill today, and I've been charged the late fee, even though my check was before the tenth. So I, I referenced my original appeal as a procedural bias, I think maybe procedural bias not, might not have been the proper term, I don't know if it may be a bias toward me. Because obviously there's an error in the department with how things are sent out. I did question some things about the notices on the bill, because I think the print of the bill changed about three months or so ago, I'm right on that, Mr. Berry. And I noticed there was a lot more verbiage on the back, which I think will help our citizens clarify the procedure and what they're supposed to do to avoid late fees and/or disconnects. Because I've had other folks somehow or another realize that I'm, you know, not picking a fight, but trying to just point out some issues to help everybody in terms of late fees. But there's some other issues, obviously, that, that maybe you folks are getting calls, or maybe the department's getting calls. Um, that's why my purpose was for the appeal was just to bring out some attention to detail and see if, uh, if I could just get that corrected. So are there questions for me, folks?
So, the, going on the, you, you said that you requested the, and going back, this is the July, when you said you requested it, on what date?
July the eighth, I asked for the check to be printed, and if I could approach the board, I can show you.
I've got my package if one of y'all wants.
Yeah, I, I've got it, too, I just wanted to clarify, you, you, I, I've got a copy of the, the check Mr. Berry sent out, but you requested it on the eighth.
To be sent on the eighth, and it was to be delivered the fifteenth or before, which it sounds pretty consistently that the batch process, that's out of my control as well as the county and the water department. Um, because I understand if I'm correct that.
So let me, and, and you just, you, what you just hit on, so the, you requested on the eighth, our policy, which we changed, is it's got to be dated the tenth. You requested on the eighth, the bank didn't date it till the eleventh, so what have you done to address the bank? I mean, that, that's where.
Well, I've asked them because I normally submit all my payments at one time around the twenty-sixth to twenty-eighth of the month prior, so, so in this example, I would have put it around the twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth of June for the bank to have it printed on the eighth. Of course, I can't validate anything on when I received the bill, just like today's bill, there's no postmark on the dates that are, on the bills that are sent to the citizens. Matter of fact, there was documentation in there, uh, Mr. Vault, that where I had questioned, when I got my bill, my normal bill, I had a current bill amount, but then I had an additional amount on the bottom that said, please pay this, or something along those lines, and I thought, well, what's the difference? So the committee has that, where I calculated, they're asking for eight dollars and ninety cents more, and I didn't know why, which goes back to my point of, I think things need to be better communicated on the original invoicing from the water department. So I didn't just go in on the eighth, just to clarify, of eighth of July to ask them to print the check that day, because I know it takes two to three days roughly from truist, I do truist. So going forward, I'm trying to make sure the money gets here, and I'm trying to make sure it's before the tenth, but with this last bill, it's dated the ninth, and I still get charged a late fee.
And that's the, you're saying that's the bill you got today?
That I got today, well, it could have came yesterday, but it was out of the mailbox today.
Your, your current account balance is not with that late fee, when the bills were processed to go out, was it the same time your check came in? It will show on there, but if we pull up the account balance now, it is not on there, but the time the bills were processed, be, after the meters were read and the bills started to get processed on the next day, that late fee is added, so it shows up on the bill. But when they got your payment, they removed that from the account, so. So, yes, it shows on there, i- if it came in prior to the fifteenth, it wouldn't show on there. Since it came in afterwards, it does, but that amount is not owed, because you paid it, and it was dated prior to the tenth, and it came in prior to the twenty-second.
That's, that's the first time that it's been on there, when there's been other fifteenth, sixteenth, seventeenth, by the bank's fault. And you clarified that day to the committee that it would not be on there. So there may be, there may be a clerical error.
And, and it's, it's not, you would not owe it, is what I said. It would, it's on the bill, it's just like you talked about the, the month before that showed the eight ninety difference. That showed on there because of that, but that, it is not...
It showed the difference, but it didn't tell me what it was for.
Right.
Just like, it doesn't tell me that I owe four dollars and forty-nine cents.
Correct.
But it's asking me to pay that, so again, I'm, I'm on guard to pay attention, but most of the citizens may not be. I think there's thirty-three thousand customers that may just go ahead and write that check, or they come in and pay that amount that's on the bottom.
It, uh, the, uh, the billing company, uh, the software company right now, uh, you pointed that out, they are adding that line that shows the late fee, and it does say what it is. It would still show up on there, the way this was processed when your payment came in, but it will show that late fee.
And, 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 and I had Mr. Bear send out a, a, with county water bill, because it's been a long time since I seen one. Uh, you know, I've, I've got, uh, town retreat water, and when they send it out, it says due upon receipt. Now, there's a due date, and ultimately, I'm responsible for paying it before that due date. Uh, and, and I think the reason they put due upon receipt is because they prefer that I pay it the next day. However, I like to hold on to my money, as Miss Nguyen will testify, when I pay my taxes, uh, till the last minute. But, you know, where I'm at is ultimately, that's on me, you know, to, to make sure it's there. That's where I'm at, so...
Well, and this is very difficult for me, because I consider Mr. Skeen's a friend. But, and I really appreciate you bringing light to a lot of things that needed to be changed, like what you just discussed with that line, you know, it being clear what's a late fee, and, you know, there's more information on the back. Um, because if we didn't have people like you, you know, I don't get a county water bill, so I would, you know, I don't necessarily look at those things either, so I appreciate that. But to me, it does seem more like, you know, we have our policy, we have the cushion. There might be little glitches here and there, but this does to me seem like more of a bank problem. So it's difficult for me to support this.
Does anybody else have any questions, comments?
I do have a question. If he paid the four ninety-five late fee, and it comes into the account, and it shows that it wasn't owed, does that go towards next year, next month's bill, and will be taken off of the balance owed?
Yes, yes.
Would be?
Yep. So if, if his bill is now showing fifty-three dollars, actually all it's owed is the, the forty-four dollar, forty-seven dollars.
And then that would be, you know, he was talking about multiple citizens seeing that and going ahead and paying that, that would be reflected?
They would have a credit that goes towards our next one, yes.
A credit that isn't necessary, but, you know, I guess the...
All right, does anybody else have anything?
The only thing I've got, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Skeen, is I feel like the, what the chairman said, what Ms. Lawson said, it appears to be a bank issue more so than it is a county issue. So that's kind of where I stand on it. I think it's a, I think it's a clerical error at the bank, more so than it is, it's obviously not a county employee issue. It is a clerical error at the bank, in my opinion. Sorry about my allergies.
All right, anything else? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anything else from the water committee? Sorry, I changed pages.
Got two more. Number two is the approval of change order number one for the Progress Park South Sewer Division One project, the pump station.
What page is that on?
I'm on, I'm on page one sixteen, now the explanation of it is...
One twenty-one is the description of the change order.
So Mr. Bear can probably explain that better than I can.
All right, Mr. Bear, do you have anything to add on that?
Uh, basically, you, you know, this was moving about real quickly in the process, and, uh, we had to shift the, uh, pump station further upstream, away from the stream. Uh, and this was required by DEQ, uh, additional electrical pipe fittings, deeper well structure required at this location, uh, and an increase of the force main, uh, I would recommend approval of this change order.
All right, coming from committee, it doesn't need a second, is there any questions or discussion on this one? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Burnet?
Abstain.
Uh, abstain.
Uh, I...
All right, so approved. Uh, number three is approval of change order number one for the Progress Park South Sewer Division Two project, force main.
All right, Mr. Bear, you want to...
Yeah, this is an increase of nine thousand and fifty-two dollars for the additional two hundred and sixty liter foot of force main that was required of this project. I do not know if anyone besides Mr. Smith may have been out in the area, but this company has moved along very quickly on installing that force main out there.
They're about done.
Yeah.
All right, come from committee, it doesn't need a second, is there any questions or discussion on that? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry?
Uh, uh.
Abstain.
Uh.
Abstain.
So approved, anything else from the water committee?
I believe that was it.
All right, we'll move on to the board supervisors' time, Mr. Burnet?
Uh, I've had some citizens talking about the Bertha Farms Road again, and a possible, uh, just doing a partial state maintain of that road. Uh, I haven't been out there to drive it recently, but, uh, more have I talked to more than just one or two people. So I don't know how far that will go. And that's it.
All right, thank you, sir, Ms. Lawson?
I have nothing at this time.
Mr. Smith?
I have, uh, a few things, Mr. Chairman. Um, I've got two that we need to add to the water committee, Mr. Bear.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Dean O'Neill, uh, he's in the same situation as Mr. Blevins here, uh, we need to look into that. And then, um, Mr. Jones, I know we talked about him and his mother, um, a while back, and he had called about his water bill as well, uh, increasing over fifty percent, so we need to look at that as a, as a whole. Going back to Mr. O'Neill, or I mean, O- Odell, he, he's normally been paying fifty to sixty dollars, and his most recent bill was two hundred and sixty-five. So we definitely need to look at that. Um, meter size is an area that we probably need to look at, uh, with him, but I can get any more information with the water committee on that.
If you'll just give me the address, so we, what, what point up, we'll look at it and see. Is it a, is it a commercial operation, is it residential?
Uh, it's apartments, so it's getting classified as a commercial, so, um, but we can look at that as a group. But I'll get you the address. Uh, Mr. William Porter, um, fifty-four sixty-five Pippersbury Road, he reached out. Um, apparently, there was a right-of-way come through and took fifteen feet of his property. He's looking to see what he needs to do to get that property back.
Which, what was the address?
Uh, fifty-four sixty-five Pippersbury Road. And this may have been his mother's property, um, that he's referring to. But there's, there's fifteen foot, uh, that was taken due to a right-of-way, and he's wanting to know how to get that, that property back.
Do you know if that was a VDOT right-of-way issue, or is it another right-of-way?
He didn't say.
Okay.
He didn't say.
If you will send me his contact information, uh, Mr. Hankins, now I'll get in touch with him and figure out if it's a subdivision right-of-way, or a VDOT right-of-way, or, or what that might be.
I'll get that to you tonight. Uh, and I'll skip down on that one. Um, Gator Lane, the guard rail, um, that's, it's still roughed up. So we need to move it away from the road right there, especially with the truck traffic that's on that road. Uh, so, uh, it's getting destroyed pretty, pretty regularly there. And then the next one, I'm kind of going to rant a little bit about this. Uh, so we, we asked VDOT to look at the speed limit on Fort Chisel Road, uh, right at the intersection of Red Hall Road, and talked about moving it south back toward the, the Church of God down there. Um, and of course, I read the email, they're, they're not going to do what, saying that they don't need to do a speed study. You know, I know if we look at that area, you got the rescue squad building there, you've got the, the, uh, trailer park that's there, the farmers that's crossing the road, you're coming into a school zone, the traffic off of seventy-seven, there's a wreck every day on seventy-seven. And then you figure in the trucking companies down there. It's kind of frustrating that they just automatically say no, and then we're the seven up here, we're having to answer to these citizens that's bringing the concerns up. Uh, so my question is to VDOT, what's it going to take, somebody losing their life right there, for them to even consider dropping these speed limits? I mean, I could go on to Route ninety-four that Jesse and I share, that we've talked about forever, but this one here seemed like a simple move to me. You weren't going to reduce the speed limit, you were just going to move the zone back. Uh, so I'm a little bit frustrated with VDOT right now. I know I got to be professional about it, uh, because we have to work with them, and we need them as much as they need us. But when you got residents that scared across the road right there, especially when on farm equipment, I get it. You know, when a tractor-trailer comes across the top of the hill, at fifty-five mile an hour, it's going to take three hundred feet for it to stop. That's, that's a hundred yards. And, you know, I wouldn't want to be in front of it, waiting on it to stop. So I, you know, I think there's a little bit more we can do. I know we talked about it before this, but, yeah, we need to, we need to do that. So I'll get off my soapbox on that, the last thing I got.
Wait a minute, would, would you, would you yield a minute, so I can get a...
Well, I've got it, it's, oh, yeah, yes, sir.
You know, I, I think that's something that we need to reach out and, and talk to Baco about, and our delegates and our senators. And, and I absolutely understand what Mr. Smith's talking about, and I'll give you even better example of, of, of North Main Street, where it retreat. Now, from Hilltop to the crossroads is forty-five miles an hour. It's been forty-five miles an hour as long as I can remember, and Stevens, about forty-five years older than I am, so he can jump in on this. But since that thing's been forty-five miles an hour, they've added a new road that goes to a new industrial park. They've added a grocery store. They've added a Family Dollar, and a lot more traffic, and it's still forty-five miles an hour. Now, and I'm sure Mr. Bear will agree, that there's a whole lot more traffic than there used to be. Boys' common sense is not common.
That's a, that's a fact.
And you're exactly right, you know, we get beat up over these speed limits, and if you've ever seen a, a, a VDOT speed study, and the way they use that eighty-fifth percentile, all I can tell you is on any given day, you better hope eighty-five of the people out there have a hundred driving, aren't idiots. True story. I mean, it just, it, it's got to be a better way. You know, I've had discussions about Four Seasons Road, you know, they opened up a sawmill, it's a, it's a residential area, unmarked residential area, paved residential area, which means it's fifty-five miles an hour. I sent out numerous emails, and I, and I agree with Mr. Smith, we, we have a good working relationship, we try to work with him, but, you know, I've asked five different people for VDOT, so you're telling me it's perfectly safe for an eighty thousand pound tractor-trailer traveling fifty-five miles an hour through Four Seasons Road? And I keep getting referred to, well, I'll forward this to the engineering department. I just want somebody to go, yes, but they know it's not safe. So as I step down off Mr. Smith's soapbox, you know, maybe next time we have a Baco region meeting, or, or a Baco event, if we're hearing it, I guarantee our brothers and sisters to the east, west, north, and south are probably going through the same thing. And I'm sorry that it made it, and...
No, give me time to think, I got something else.
But I mean, Mr. Bear, you've done this a long time, it's, you know, it's frustrating for the citizens.
It is.
You know, I live in an S curve, and it's an unmarked road, which means it's fifty-five miles an hour. Now, I'm going to tell you what's going to happen if you come through my S curve at fifty-five miles an hour. I tell everybody, I don't have a problem speeding, if you don't want to have a problem speeding, live in an S curve, because common sense does go that far. Um, but I mean, Mr. Bear, I don't know, is there any, you have any suggestions, or Mr. Hankins, you've been around sixty-seven years?
Uh, you, you're, you're correct, I, it's, you know, you all here at staff hears it, it's extremely, it is frustrating. Um, and we don't write those rules, we know they refer everyone.
And what really, what really upsets me, and I don't know if, if Mr. Smith has got this response, is they say, we don't want to create a speed trap. Why I'm not asking you set it to seventeen and three-quarter mile per hour? You know, I'm talking about common spin, common sense, and as long as they've got them big black and white signs well-posted, which fifty-two is, Main Street Retreat is, it's not a speed trap. It's a matter of being able to read. But, sorry.
So a couple of things, um...
No, he's got a couple.
Well, I had one, yeah, he, he jumped up there. Um, so Mr. Rup on Connors Valley Road, uh, apparently he has, um, had to replace several tires, and he is linking it to the guard rails that needs to be replaced on Connors Valley. But I can send all that to you in an email, uh, but that's what he had sent to me. I was going to reach out to some other folks down there and, and see what they're saying. And then the last thing I got, Mr. Chairman, if you want to let me have a minute of your time, so we can discuss this last thing together.
Oh, yeah, I've got it, I've got it on my list, I know what we're talking about. Mr. Horny?
I don't have anything this time.
Mr. Terry?
Uh, two things, first, Mr. Blevins, we talked about that at the start of the meeting. The second thing I have, Mr. Chairman, is we have a problem with Richardson's ambulance service in the county. They're advertising to solicit nine-one-one calls. It's an ongoing problem, we follow this in the fire and rescue committee. We're waiting to get some type of draft proposal back to try and fix it, we don't have it back yet. And I'm looking for maybe the board to take full action, to set some type of precedence. I don't know what's in our toolbox to do that, but that's not acceptable, and I'm tired of dealing with it.
Mr. Bear, I know we've talked about this, or Mr. Forling, I know we've talked about it for a while. I mean, we have a draft designated emergency response agency plan that would designate your three, uh, agencies as the ones that would do emergency transports, so that would be Retreat Rescue Squad, Lead Mines Rescue Squad, and Whiffle Fire and Rescue. We can, i- if, if you want to consider that and, and put it in place, that would relegate any of the other services to secondary roles. So that's basically, you don't take emergency calls unless we call you and say, we're out of ambulances, we need somebody else to run. That doesn't happen very often. Um, but it, it, it would help us i- in some sense, in that there have been days when we've run out of ambulances, and we need somebody else to send. But it would keep your three primary ag- uh, public agencies as the ones that would be responding to those calls. And, um, there, there's been some conversation, a draft has circulated between the fire and rescue committee and, uh, some of the, uh, the chiefs of those agencies today. I think we have pretty close agreement on it, uh, doing what it needs to do, and if you want us to put it on your, your next agenda.
Well, I, I was getting ready to say, our next meeting is September thirteenth. How about let's bring that draft to the board, because we've discussed this for, I don't, a couple of years.
And, and I asked Mr. Forling to, we'll send him that copy as well, and, and see if there's anything that we can add for any type of, I'll call it punitive language in the process. But, uh, uh, the challenge is still going to be making certain that any direct solicitation, uh, Facebook, social media, otherwise, is, is limited.
I think if they break that, we have the authority, we can just remove them from the county and revoke their license to operate the county.
I mean, we had to give them a, a certificate of permission to operate the... Yeah.
And they're abusing it.
Yeah, they're out, so I'm gonna use it.
They're permitted to operate as a transport owner.
Right.
So that's what they're.
Non-emergency transport.
That's right, correct, yeah.
So once they turn those lights on, they're either emergency or they're violating the Code of Virginia, because the Code of Virginia says you only run lights and sirens in an emergency. So you can't have it both ways, correct?
I'll defer your interpretation of that, I don't know about the lights, but, you know.
You went two years longer than I did.
So I'd have to read.
You passed the bar, Scott.
I know, I'd have to read the code sections, I have them.
He's never passed a bar.
I'm I'm not touching that. All right.
But just, I'm sorry, I'm gonna take a second of your time. But before we do send it to Mr. Farthing, are you all going to look at the verbiage of Chief Brady, Mr. Jackson, everyone discussed? Because to me, you know, they know a lot more about that than the Fire Rescue Committee.
And Mr. Limeberry, you probably haven't seen it, Mr. Limeber- or Assistant Chief Limeberry sent a response that I think covers.
Perfect, okay. Yeah, because I just don't want it to go, Mr. Farthing, to us in a couple of weeks and then we do this all over, so, okay, thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Terry?
Oh, sir, that's all I've got, I appreciate it.
All right, uh, I'll make mine real quick. The the water bill issue, Mr. Blevins spoke about it, I said, you know, my piece on that, but I'd ask the Water Committee to give us a resolution to that. Also, today I found out, and I'll ask Mr. Bear, or Mr. Hankins to ask me or help me out on this, the, and I call it the State Lab here in Whitfield. I don't know what the actual name of it is.
That's what I call it.
V-DAX, you know, it's the animal lab up here on Castle Road. I happened to be up there today and apparently there's been some discussion about closing it down and moving it to the G B Tech. Which, you know, by the look on Mr. Hornet's face, you know, it's a tremendous resource, not only for With County but several counties. So if if y'all could check into that, I know they told me they've been in contact with Matthew Miller, but if if those discussions have been had, we need to jump in real quick and put our two cents in because that's a tremendous resource that that I really want to lose. And I don't know, Jane, if you heard that.
I was up there the other day and none of them said anything about that.
The next thing is September seventeenth, I just seen that we're having, they're having a cleanup day at the Retreat Lake for volunteers. They they put that on Facebook, if anybody wants to join me, I'll be there, you know, you know, my opinion on that resource we've got. And we've got some improvements to make now that we've actually got a lease, but that's a good idea and if anybody, I don't know who put that together, but. If we can have some of those cleanup days, maybe some other places out in the county, I think that'd be good. And the last thing is, I've got a really lonely orange tie that has 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 been lonely for about a year. And and I will extend to the gentleman in Fort Chisel the same offer I did last year. Now, I will tell you, you have one up on me because you've seen Fort Chisel play and I haven't made it to any Retreat games. I will proudly rock the the old gold if Fort Chisel wins Friday night, but.
I was gonna say, I got a gold, a black and gold tie.
And I'm just saying, sir. I'll see you there Friday, and, you know, let's hope for a great football season. I I shared that on Facebook and and I'll try not to tear up when I say it, but if you've not seen Retreat's football helmets, they put Dean Ray's signature on them and that, I mean, yeah, you've seen it, so it's pretty awesome, so.
But that's all I've got now, we've got a closed meeting under two point two dash thirty-seven eleven eight three to discuss acquisition and disposition of real property, the Apex Property, and I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry, I have a second.
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Hornet, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're now in closed session.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now back in open session on the record, if Mr. Terry will read the certification.
Whereas the With County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Whereas section two point two dash thirty-seven twelve of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the With County Board of Supervisors that such a meeting was conducted in conformity with the Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the With County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies it to the best of each member's knowledge. Only public business matters exempt, lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification resolution applies. And only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convened in the closed meeting were heard discussed and are considered by the With County Board of Supervisors. And, Mr. Chairman, I'll make that a motion.
All right, have a motion by Mr. Terry, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson, is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved. All right, Mr. Bear, you have anything else to come before the board?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hankins? That's what I said. All right. Mr. Farthing?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Collins? All right, does anybody else have anything? Hearing none, we'll be adjourned.